Good evening and welcome to the Gilderlin Board of Education's January 14th meeting. Can everyone please turn off their cell phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will begin with the high school student representatives.
Hi, my name is Parth Sarecha and I'm one of the student representatives for the Board of Education. It's such an honor to be here tonight.
My name's Levin Panous. I'm the other Board of Education representative. Today's going to be a short interval from us, so the first thing we wanted to touch upon was that the quarter ends next Friday, so students should be on the lookout for that and they should make sure all their homework is turned in and all the assignments are up to date. And we'll also have two half-days leading up to that day, so on Thursday and Friday there'll be two half-days before their quarter ends. That's all from me. I'd like to pass along to Parth.
Thank you, Levin. Last on us from our note is that the Spirit Rally is coming up on January 31st. So this will be the second Spirit Rally that we've had since COVID-19 hit and we had to go into lockdown and the pandemic, so I'm really excited to see what it's like. I know that there's going to be a lot of, a couple performances, lots of games that are happening. Last year there was a lot of things, like somebody ran across the gymnasium with a really big red Gilderlin flag, so I'm really excited to see what they do this year. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Great, thank you. Okay, and we'll, are there any public comments, Linda?
Yes, two.
Okay, two. Oh, my bad, right here next to me. Excellent. Why don't we begin with David Dwyer, and then we'll go to you, Parth?
Hey, everybody, how's it going? If you see the pieces of paper there that you have, I apologize, I only made 10, so some of you will have to share. Basically, what I'm asking for is, as you, as you read, it says, "Career Intern, Internmanship and College Exploration Department." Usually, when we have our kids, and even far back with us, is we go into the guidance counselor, "What do you want to do? Okay, fill this out." On average, in America, we spend 22 minutes with our kids to decide their future. That's a big decision. That's a lot of anxiety for them. What I'm asking is, is we come up with, with this exploration department. Choosing a job, a career, isn't one big decision. It's a series of small decisions. When you buy a used car, you don't just say, "I want that car." You look at it. You look at its history. You look at how much it's going for. You look at other places that have the same vehicle. There's a lot that you look at, and you're making small decisions about that vehicle. And you may end up, you may not want that vehicle, you may end up with another one. And when we think of that huge decision, and the small decisions that we make, we want to break it down. One of the first things we want to do is see what jobs we want to do, what our kids want to do. And we want to think of job shadowing. We can do that. They can choose a job shadow. They can shadow for, say, a dentist. They can shadow for an accountant, a lawyer. It's those things that start the process, that start the exploration. From there, they can do internships. But at the same time, too, if you look at the second page, it talks about what the job shadow. That's a document right there that the kid would, the student would fill out with, with an adult, and they would have the information, and we as a school would use that for them to show where they're going to go and for future references. At the same time, too, if you look at the next page, the career decisions tree, those are questions that a child has to answer, look up the information, and use those, use that information to decide, "Is this the job I want?" They can fill it out for every single job that they want. You know, they get several of them, but it gives them that path forward, and it, it breaks it down. At the same time, too, oh, is it three minutes already? Okay. Is it, can I ask you guys something? Is it possible we could do this, I could talk to you guys later, you know, with more time, you know, like privately or anything like that, you know, like your next meeting or something?
So...
Because I have a lot more information I think you guys like to hear.
So, Mr. Dwyer, why don't you reach out to Mrs. Sim and make an appointment? You can come and sit with me and with our district office team, and maybe we'll bring in the high school principal, and then we can distill that and share it with the board.
No problem. All right, yeah, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Parth.
Hello again. So, I come before you now, not as a representative for the student body, but as a representative of a minority group at Gilderlin High School. As Gilderlin students, we are proud that our district is not only a pioneer in DEI, but a leader, even being one of the first districts to establish the position of DEI officer. As such, we come here today with the hope that Gilderlin continues to be a leader in DEI and add Diwali, a Hindu holiday, to the district calendar. Diwali marks the day that one of our most significant gods, Lord Ram, returned home after a 14-year-long exile in the forest, during which he slayed the demon king, Ravan.
Like Parth said, Diwali is one of the most, one of the most important holidays for Hindus. Many preparations go into the weeks leading up to it, and the day of Diwali itself is filled with festivities and praying. Such celebrations include lighting up lamps throughout the, to put around the house to symbolize the victory of light over darkness, praying at the home, and oftentimes going to the temple to pray there as well. For Hindus, Diwali is our Christmas, our Eid, and our Hanukkah. Again, Diwali is such a big event that so much time is needed in order to adequately prepare for it. Oftentimes, with Diwali falling on a school day, it can be extremely difficult to find the time to do your homework, wake up early to pray, and then rush to school and go to the temple and help around the house, and as such, we request that the board consider adding Diwali to our academic calendar as a recognized holiday. This way, students and staff will get the day off in observance of Diwali, just as we do with other holidays.
Now, we also understand how difficult it is to add another day off on our calendar. However, given the significance of Diwali for the approximately 1 billion people who celebrate it worldwide, and the fact that Governor Hokel recently signed legislation in New York City that made Diwali a public school holiday, we hope that there would be some way to incorporate the holiday into our current calendar and let the Hindu students know that their pleas are not going unheard. The number of people who celebrate Diwali in the capital region is rapidly growing, with the first-ever Diwali celebration occurring at the Empire State Plaza this past Diwali in 2024. I have discussed the possibility of adding it into the calendar with our DEI officer at the school, as well as Ms. Parker, who is in full support of our endeavor. I also have with me a petition signed by two, almost 230 GHS students who are in support of seeing Diwali added to the academic calendar. We hope that the district and the board continue to be avid supporters and pioneers of DEI and provide students and staff with a day off in order to observe the most important Hindu holiday, Diwali. Thank you very much for your time and have a great night.
Thank you. Is it Shruti? Okay, if you just want to say your name into the mic, because I did not say your name.
Yeah, my name is Shruti Kamanga, and thank you for your time as well.
Great. So, thank you both. Parth, could I, did you bring the, something with you you'd like us to see? Is that the petition?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you both. One of my favorite things is when students use their voice, and, you know, I've learned about Diwali, and I appreciate that you took the initiative to begin a petition. And yes, I am in full support, as you, as you stated. Would anybody else like to see the petition? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think the way it works is that we discuss the calendar, future meetings.
It's actually on the agenda today.
Great, okay, so, and at that point, I, I think we'll probably talk about it further. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Okay, program report. I think we have Mr. Finsell?
Uh, yes. Joining us this evening is the Instructional Administrator for Social Studies, English, Library, and did I miss any, Dr. Finsell?
I think reading.
And reading? Sorry, how could I miss reading? And he is going to spend a little time with us tonight, giving us an update on our social studies program.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to spend roughly 10 minutes or so, forgive me, I'm going blind. Have to use readers now to see everything. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview of social studies here at the high school, kind of span about roughly a decade or so. So, a couple of things in this program report. We're going to look at New York State requirements, some changes, things that we have currently at GHS in terms of program structures and opportunities, new things that we've just put into practice, such as a civic seal of readiness, and things we got to look forward to, to sustain our excellent social studies program going into the future. So, as it is right now, all students need four credits of social studies. We have Global History nine, Global History 10, US History, and a half-credit each of Economics and Participation in Government. They also traditionally need to pass and be successful on the Global Regents Examination and the US History Examination. That meets New York State's graduation requirements as of right now. Now, what social studies has gone through over the past decade, the best way I can say this is that, you know, if you're watching Jeopardy and somebody wants to take US History, and there's a random factoid up there, that's like the old US History, Global History, names, dates, and places. The current incarnation of history is about the application of skill. Students using inquiry, inductive reasoning, interpreting sources, and I have to emphasize the source part, because that is probably the most important thing in a practical application today. You know, whether a student is watching the news on MSNBC or Fox News, it's about framing the information to understand how it's presented so that you can always get a kernel of truth, no matter where you're going to. So you can also, like, I understand their position and where they're leaning, and have a good degree of certainty of the information there, or not relying on things that are, "This is 100% accurate," which that, nobody's 100% objective, right? In the reality, everyone has a degree of bias. Some of it is on the sleeve, and some of it you have to deep, dig a little deeper into expose. So, over this past decade, there has been a greater focus on the skills in social studies, and, big surprise, a lot of those skills have been in place in the world of English. So if we look at English, we know students look at, "What was the author's purpose? What was the author's point of view? Who was the author writing to?" So we've worked really hard to kind of transfer those skills in English into social studies as it relates to looking at sources, thinking, expressing, constructing arguments, and supporting it with good evidence and reasoning. Another great thing that we've been able to do over the past 10 years here has been expand and introduce our co-top program, which we have in Global History nine, all the way up to Public Policy and Economics. And so, again, I want to emphasize a couple of things here. The greater presence of skills, which are germane in English, and if kids are doing a lot more reading and writing, the need for literacy, student literacy, and that capacity is, is more important than it ever has. So if a student could get by in, say, 1861 Civil War, but they don't have the ability to understand who was Lincoln writing to with the Emancipation Proclamation, and what was his purpose, and what the language he used to understand and frame, that's much more sophisticated, right? So that kind of captures the shift in social studies, I'd say, in the past decade. Now, one of the things I want to kind of sort of present to, which I think is a testament to our teachers, to our students, is again, all of these things were designed to be put into place over this past decade. And the thing is, we got COVID. And COVID happened, as you know, in the 1920s school year, and as we were preparing for these brand-new Regents exams to kind of test our chops, to see how well our kids are doing in these new skill-based practices, COVID hit us. And as you know, like, COVID really hurt all kids at all levels, right? So despite that, I just want to show you what we've been able to do performance-wise in both the Global History and the US History realm. Now, again, I want to sort of highlight something. The Regents exam is not perfect, but it is some benchmark we can use, because all kids here use it. So it has some degree of, "How did kids do?" Right? So one of the things I want to kind of point out to you is that in the process of changing over to the new framework Global Regents exam, we underwent this transition. Prior to that, Global History Regents reflected the ninth and 10th grade curriculum. The transition then focused only on the content in 10th grade, and then with the framework, it's the whole new skills practice. So what I want to kind of show to you here is that compared to the state in terms of pass rate, our kids are very strong. We're talking about 15-ish points higher than kids across the state in terms of our success on the Global Regents in all variations. And what I was expecting with COVID and the Regents examinations, that the first time that we were able to do, the first time that kids would struggle, and we did really, really well. And a lot of it, I think, is attributed to that we did not wait for these changes to happen, that we were working on skill development way ahead of time in preparation for this change, to make sure they were prepared to be successful. And I'd say the same thing, too, with the US History exam, because these things were kind of staggered in terms of their release. You can see that we have had really high, strong performance in the US History Regents, the old one, and with the new framework, after three years of going dark, that we're still performing at a level that's commensurate with where we were before at a much more difficult and challenging exam. I will say this, if you ever, you got some free time on your hands, go to the Office of State Assessment and take a look at the English Regents exam and the new US History Regents exam, and ask yourself which one, which one has more reading and writing. And you might be hard-pressed to say, "I don't know," and maybe it might be the US one, right? That's where we're at in terms of, like, we cannot neglect our children's adeptness with literacy, right? It's not about the names, dates, and places. It's about absorbing information, processing it, and expressing it in ways that are efficient. So, and one more point of view is like, this is all pass rates. So this is kids who got a 65 or better. It'd be higher, because I didn't include kids with low pass, but I just want to keep the traditional 65 benchmark, because people are pretty familiar with that. Now, what I also did, too, is like, for the current cohort of students, seniors graduating this year, this is about how they, the average of how these students in AP or College and Honors, Regents and Align actually did on these last two iterations. So it's the same cohort. So you can see here that kids, by and large, do pretty darn well from a performance level on these exams. Talking 92, 90 for our AP and College, to about 80 for our Regents and Align kids, and that's pretty consistent for how they did as sophomores and juniors. So now, things that we're trying to do in addition to tests, because it's not just about tests, it's about learning experiences. So one of the things that we've also worked really hard on doing over the past 10 years is providing new opportunities for kids, especially in the area of electives and college-aligned programs. So as it is right now, we've got, I'd say, almost seven or eight non-SUPA, non-AP courses that kids can get three college credits apiece through either Schenectady County or Hudson Valley, and we're working really hard to do more. I know that some of your sons and daughters who are on the board may have taken an honors class, maybe the honors 10 global, which was SCC, trying to figure out ways to do more of that. So that, A, that kids have more credits to lower the amount of debt and college time, wherever they're going to go after the fact, and we all know that if they get college started now, they're more likely to continue and finish up with a college degree. And most importantly, we talk about the middle student, the kind of general student. The wonderful thing about these SCC courses and HVCC, that there's a lot of economic incentives, so if a kid is free and reduced lunch, that gets rid of that barrier, and they have the chance to try and earn credit and have greater self-worth, and take something with them in addition to our really great social studies program here. As I've said before, we have a really robust, inclusive co-top program, so in ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade, we have six sections within our Regents program that are, we have our social studies and our special ed teacher together. We also have that in 12th grade. We have a couple of sections of economics and public policy. We work really hard with our English teachers to make sure that, again, those skills that are like very easy and adept in English are used and leveraged in social studies. And... And I think too, probably the most important part of all of this success, right? Whether it's people working together, special ed, English teachers working with social studies teacher, it's the collaboration. A lot of this stuff has been done in-house. We haven't gotten any external experts. We haven't bought any kind of textbook. All this stuff has been locally homegrown by our talented teachers. And the key ingredient is providing time and space for people to work together. A small part of that also has been in our aligned program too, where English and Social Studies has worked very deliberately together, in addition to department-wide alignment between English and Social Studies. So the new thing here I want to just introduce you to is our Civic Seal of Readiness. And I'm going to ask Mr. John Okuma to come up because he's been a part of the class itself and he can speak directly to that. But just an overview, the Civic Seal is a brand spanking new thing where if kids earn points in civic knowledge and skills, they can get a seal stamp on their diploma. And that shows that they have met a requirement, that they are a good citizen. They're active in their community and they know how to make change. They're a good, well-informed, well-rounded citizen. Our vehicle for doing this is Teacher Core. It's a brand-new course, and the idea is, is that the course is designed to do civic action through education in our own community. And I'm going to let John speak of this, but I want to say one last thing before he talks about this, is that this course just recently got college credit approved through Ualbany. It's the ETAP 201, it's a 200-level course, and it's exploring teaching as a profession. And we are one of five schools in New York State who has the ability to do this for our kids. So again, what are we trying to do? We're trying to give meaningful opportunities for kids to earn college, have good experiences, and feel really proud as a citizen in their community while at Gildelin. So John, why don't you please share with the audience?
Thank you, Dr. Finsell. John Okuma, one of these collaborations Dr. Finsell was talking about, I'm a reading teacher here at the high school. I get to work with an esteemed colleague, Tyler Lutchen, who's a social studies teacher here. I put a couple of notes here so I do this justice. But Teacher Core is a full-year course designed to empower students to explore important civic issues impacting young children in our community. I know in this photo you might not be able to see this, but we have some high school students right there presenting to an elementary school staff, and they are preparing to use some of their both knowledge and their experience to work with younger students. The things we're working on for civic readiness are issues like self-esteem, bullying prevention, decision-making, the impact of digital technology and social media, diversity and tolerance, and among other areas that they're using. They use teaching as a vehicle to address a civic issue within our school community. They've already identified some of these issues. They are doing some research through our library and our library media to analyze the issue, and they're designing and getting ready to implement some of these lesson plans for our elementary school students. These participating students, they're building leadership skills, they're building teamwork skills. It is a highlight of my day to work with this group. It is authentic, it is inspiring. They're designing lesson plans and are excited to be working both together and with our elementary staff and colleagues. It is a bright part of my day to work with Teacher Core, gives me some hope, which is always a nice thing to bask in. I'm excited to say that you should be hearing from some of these students later this year. And I will leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. I can't tell you how hard it was to not break out into song and dance with him here, but maybe another time. So, looking ahead. So unfortunately, you know, we lost a really important American. President Carter passed away. And in the true social studies nerd I am, I thought about him and things that he had said. And he once remarked, when he was getting his Nobel Prize in 2002, that we must adjust to changing times and still hold to unchanging principles. And those were words inspired by his first-grade teacher, too. So this is the hard thing. We have all of these great opportunities for kids. We're trying to do more, trying to provide more college courses, more opportunities to have collaboration and integration, trying to expand. The Civic Seal of Readiness right now is within Teacher Core. Where else could we do those things? Where it's meaningful. We do not want to do things that are just handout, where things lose value, but things that really have good intrinsic worth, things that you feel proud of, worth doing at the end of the day, things that you are proud of, that you will remember long beyond your time here at Gildelin High School, whether as a student or a teacher. And so I think the hardest thing here is how do we, how can we make all these things happen? We've done such a great job. Like I said, I think the key thing is the collaboration. There's been a lot of opportunities that we've done in English. And one thing I'm very proud in particular, that this is social studies in English, that all of our kids in ninth grade, is that they all have the experience of learning about 9/11 together. They all read shared texts, they all go to the New York State Museum, they all participate in that together, regardless of the level of the class that you're in. And those are the kinds of things that we're trying to work really hard because we do not want to leave any kid behind from those meaningful activities. So the hard thing is like, how do you do more with what you have? And it's complicated, I could say, like, with the amount of specializations that we have, the collaboration, like, teachers are one person. There's only so much time in the day that they can work with another because they need the time to be able to do that. And I think that's where we're at, like, we're trying to provide more opportunities, sustain all of the things that I think that we are all very proud of here, give students and families what they need so that they are future-ready. And again, I think the key word here for Gildelin is all students. What do we do that benefits all students? And if there's something that we're considering, what is the impact on those who we might not be talking about? To make sure that we are doing our best to give everyone a great chance of being successful. So on that note, does anyone have any questions?
Familiar with your co-taught program, and I just want to compliment your teachers. I've been impressed for four years at the work that they do and in the co-taught classes here. And again, with aligning with English, just really the progress that can be seen in their commitment to it, I've been impressed the entire time. And also, you know, I'm excited to hear more about what you're able to come up with for more civic education for all students because it's so valuable and important. So thank you. We'd like to hear more about what, you know, what ideas you do come up with and what you're able to expand that for all students. So thank you.
Yeah, just to echo a lot of that as well. Thank you for all that the department does across the board for various learners. I also just want to ask along the same lines, I know that US History has a civic literacy essay, so that definitely speaks to the two different aspects that you're touching on. And then it sounds like this course, is it in the educational, is the education field in SUNY Albany, or is it a separate thing altogether? Is it part of the education program?
Yes, it's through the School of Education.
So would there be other courses along those lines that are also part of the School of Education, or would it go into different areas of civics that would also factor into public policy and things like that as well?
Can you restate your question specifically?
Yes, so my question is, as, like, to head down the similar pathway that the department is looking towards moving, would there be more courses that would also broaden to a public policy-type courses beyond education, or is it going to focus mainly in that field?
I think in its current configuration, it's going to focus on the civics portion. But there's always opportunity. I mean, the course, it's kind of a two-for-one course, right? On the one hand, one could say, hey, look, it's a course about, are you interested in teaching? Do you want to know more about teaching? Do you want to see what it's like to teach? It's that. But on the other hand, the way that we're using it as is right now, it's aligned to meet social studies practices and standards, not just for the Civic Seal of Readiness, but we've done a lot of department work, not just at the high school, but we're talking K-12. We spent a lot of time looking at the social studies practices and prioritizing, and a lot of those things are probably more important at the elementary. And I think one of the, again, I think this is all generative collaboration. I give credit to Mr. Okuma because back in the day, he used to do this at Altamont with GPALS and reading, so he, you know, you never forget great things. But I think here, this is a great thing, that this is a social studies class here with kids who have social studies on the brain, they know the purpose, they know the audience, and they also are a resource to elementary teachers who may or may not be social studies, you know, they could be a math teacher, could be an English teacher, could be a science teacher, could be a social. What we see sometimes is with someone's comfort level, that's either, hey, I really like this, or I'm not comfortable. So we're trying to kind of spread the wealth of knowledge here in a generative way, give back, which I think is kind of part of what this is meant to be in a meaningful way. But to answer your question, there's always a realm of possibility where a course like this could be applied elsewhere for other purposes down the road.
Yeah, it sounds like a good vertical integration of trying to bring about those curricular skills that, unfortunately, social studies is skipped over oftentimes at the younger grade level. So it's nice to find a way to connect it to the other disciplines by integrating those skills. That's good.
Do we take questions from the audience?
After the board has a chance.
I have a question. So first of all, I feel really proud of the program that you run. I think it's wonderful. My own children have had a great experience, but we also receive lots of compliments on social studies in particular. I wonder, so in its current form, you have to be a student that's interested in teaching in order to get the Seal of Civic Readiness. But down the road, there might be, it might be opened up. Is that correct?
Are you?
If I have a student that doesn't necessarily want to be a teacher, but is interested in pursuing the Seal of Civic Readiness, there's no other pathway currently.
So remember how I said if you got some time to go on the Regents exams? If you got a lot of time, you can go in there and look to see the handbook for the Civic Seal of Readiness. So it is what the school designs it to be. And so the way that the seal is designed right now, passively with the knowledge part, I said in the beginning, students have to have four credits, they have to take two Regents exams. Kids are going to passively earn all of those knowledge credits, whether they're looking to do so or not. The key thing is the civic skills component, which is the capstone, which is part of Teacher Core. So a student who's not even thinking about the Civic Seal, say, I want to be a teacher, and they can enroll in it and be shocked that they now qualify for the Civic Seal of Readiness because of the way that we have it currently configured, if that makes sense.
Right, it does. I see the value in the seal for sure. I just wonder if like a student that wants to be a doctor, social worker, not necessarily, like, it wouldn't be on their radar to take a class on, you know, becoming a teacher if they could potentially have a pathway. But it sounds like not right now, but maybe at some point.
Yeah, I mean, I think as with everything, there is, there are constraints, kind of going back to the challenges, like, we have only so many teachers, we have a complex schedule. It is very difficult to put people together and then coordinate. So we are very grateful for all of the elementaries and all of the elementary teachers who have welcomed our Teacher Core class into them. We're very grateful for transportation, to be able to arrange for busing to and from there. So you can see, like, if we could do more of it, that would be wonderful. But with that comes a lot of logistical things that would need to be able to work out and make sense against everything else that we're doing.
I think these seals are great, like the Seal of Biliteracy. I think anything that gives our student an edge. I think you said we would be one of five, or we are one of five, so I think that's great.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else have questions on the board? If not, I'll-
Just a really quick question.
Please, Rebecca.
So it's five schools in all of New York State that offer this?
That have the alignment for the college course for teaching. We're one of many, like, lots of schools have different configurations. What I did not want to do here is I didn't want to have, oh, look, I didn't even realize, I just earned it, and this loses its value. I wanted, and again, it has to be practical for us, practical for students within reach achievable to start. And something that, when a kid works really hard at doing, they feel really good. It's not passively earned, like all the Regents and Social Studies, like, that Teacher Core kids have to work. So there's, I have some great ideas about expanding the skill portion into other areas. I think about sometimes, a lot of our kids in focus who do community service, that's a way for them to validate what they're doing in the community. Now, it's easy for me to say that, it's another thing to like, what does that now look at in practice? What would we need? There's other areas too where we could design some things, but it's about sustainability, practicality, and not, yeah, I think sustainability and practicality, what we can do and not doing too much that we can't handle.
Mr. Dwyer.
First of all, would you qualify that as a- As an internship? The teaching part?
I think that has come up in some respects. I mean, it depends on how you define that. I mean, Assistant Superintendent Anderson?
Let me interject for a minute. So right now, it does not meet all the requirements to be an internship. It doesn't meet the hours, and it doesn't meet some of the job skill pieces that need to be in place for a true internship. However, it is students working in a course that gives them a little bit of experience, a taste of what the career of teaching might be, along with the other goals of the course. So currently, no, it's not an internship. We've had some internal discussions about what we might need to do to create a shared pathway where a student who would like to do an internship could take a course like Teacher Core, or we have a similar course, each one, each one teach one in the World Language Department, but currently, we do not have that structure set up yet.
Because what I was thinking of, within an internship here, in a sense, could we have other schools send their students, pretty much like a CTE, like a secondary CTE?
I don't think we have that capacity at this point, but that's, we talk all the time about how we can work with other districts. So there's a potential down the road for us to expand in some way. I just don't know what that will look like yet.
Have a fabulous night, everyone. Today's Benedict Arnold's birthday too, by the way.
Thank you both. So now we'll move on to Andrew.
Good evening. As part of the budget process throughout the year, I presented each board meeting a component of the overall composition of the budget to help with transparency for the community, for board understanding, to make clear for the decisions we make and the moving parts that feed into the budget. The last board meeting, I covered the rollover budget, which asked, what happens if we continue all current programming and staffing at existing levels with no, with no changes? Today, I'm going to talk about fund balance and reserves, which are a critical part of short- and long-term planning for a school district. Fund balance itself is the amount of surplus that exists at the end of the fiscal year. We use fund balance in a more narrow sense to talk about unassigned fund balance. When we talk about a 4% limit to fund balance, this is unassigned fund balance, which are funds that are unrestricted. So a school district can carry over 4% of the following year's budget in unrestricted funds. This is sort of a rainy day fund that a district can have for unanticipated needs. Districts also can set aside money in reserves, which are restricted to a given need. They're spelled out under law and have various rules about how they can be funded, how they can be appropriated. Some have more- Some have more onerous restrictions, some have lesser restrictions. And then there's appropriating fund balance. This is when we assign some of the surplus to the following year's budget to reduce The two big components for us are the unrestricted fund balance, the 4%, and then our reserve funds, these targeted funds that we legally, you know, fund for anticipated expenses, and then we can use them when needed. The analogies aren't perfect between sort of large organizational economics and your home economics, but to try to use some parallels to personal finance to make this clear, unassigned fund balance is like a financial advisor who recommends that you maintain an emergency fund of, say, three to six months of expenses or pay. So if you were to encounter a catastrophe, you would be able to weather that storm as you transitioned out of it. Reserves are the analogy of saving up over time for a specific purpose, right? So if you are setting up a 529 plan to educate one of your children, or save up to make a down payment on a home purchase, that is analogous to how we would use reserve plans. As I said, they're a crucial part of our planning because they allow us flexibility, they provide us with cash on hand, so we can avoid borrowing for cash if we have a cash shortage. Often, a district that is in such a situation has to issue, you know, a TAN, a Tax Anticipation Note, or RAN, a Revenue Anticipation Note, which is short-term borrowing to cover cash flow. This is both suboptimal from a financial sense, because it incurs additional fees, and it also is an indicator of fiscal stress within a school district. Conversely, having larger cash reserves is beneficial for borrowing. So when we issue debt, whether it's short-term or long-term debt in the form of a bond, we get much more favorable interest rates in our, based on our level of reserves. It's one of the critical components that, you know, Moody's or another bond rating agency will use when assigning a risk level to our debt is how much do we have on hand and what is our long-term trend, right? So do we, having cash on hand for the short term is not as meaningful as having a sustained reserve trend because it indicates that you have financial stability, right? On the other hand, when districts have fiscal stress, if they use fund balance or reserves to balance the budget, this sets up their own version of a fiscal cliff, right? These are non-recurring funds. If they are used to fill in recurring expenses, when those funds are exhausted, the deficit is even larger. So fund balance reserves, if they're used to balance the budget, have to be done very carefully. This can happen when there's an unanticipated one-time expense, but it's a very dangerous sign if you're using it for sort of recurring expenses. We see the impact of a crisis on our reserves. We can look at the Great Recession. They almost halved Gilderland reserves as we went through the gap elimination adjustment, the economic downturn, the, you know, the overall state aid reductions, and it took us some time to get out of that. We were designated by the Office of the State Comptroller as being susceptible to fiscal stress for both 2012, 13, and 2013, 14. This is a measure that, you know, Comptroller uses the fund balance reserves as one component of a larger economic and environmental stress. I present on this usually at the fall board meetings when the reports come out. We have not been susceptible to stress for many years, so that's a good sign. I also mentioned earlier that having shortage of reserves can lead to a lower bond rating, which raises borrowing costs. So Moody's lowered our rating from AA3 to A1, which did increase the cost of borrowing for the school district. So maintaining the reserves will be to our financial benefit when it comes to borrowing for things like a capital construction project. So these are our year-end reserve levels. Some things to highlight, we have the 4% amount, the capital reserve, we have a little over $3 million. This is part of the plan that, for the capital project that will be on the ballot this May. Dr. Wiles will be talking about an update on this later in the meeting. We also have the retirement contribution as a significant reserve we hold, which can be used for both ERS and TRS expenses. This graph compares suburban council peer districts and our district in terms of the fund balance as share of budget. So this is fund balance in that broader sense of both unrestricted and the reserves. Our dip was almost entirely due to tax surcharge payments over the last three years. Some of the surplus we realized in fund balance is something of a misnomer. As we, our tax surcharge bond that we issued last year included partially replenishing our reserves in order to ensure that we had sufficient cash on hand. This is the gap presented in the last chart. In other words, how much additional fund balance will we need to be at the suburban council average? We have returned to sort of our medium-term historic level of being, you know, a few percentage points below the suburban council average. Things that many districts face that are affecting their overall fund balance reserves. The first is the end of federal COVID stimulus. Districts use these funds in various ways. Some use them for recurring expenses, which as I mentioned earlier, using non-recurring revenue for recurring expenses sets up the fiscal cliff, which can be financially devastating. And some of them used them for one-time expenses, or used them in lieu of some other expenses to shore up their reserves. So there was a lot, a lot of ways this played out for school districts. There was also a foundation aid phase in over the previous three years that included record state aid increases for school districts. But on the same hand, we don't know what the future foundation aid is. We'll be anxiously awaiting the release of the governor's executive budget proposal in the next week or so to find out her vision of foundation aid moving forward. For last year's budget sheet, coming out of her proposal, and the end result, agree with the legislature on funding the Rockefeller Institute for Government to do a study of foundation aid. So we will see when the executive proposal, how much, if any, of that work ends up in her proposal. Inflation has come down from the strong highs we had a couple of years ago, but still persistent, and it's unevenly distributed, so we have some expenses that continually go up. If you talk to Cliff Noonie, our facilities director, he can share with you numerous examples of products that go up and up and up in cost that we have to have, and that really can, puts a strain on our budget. Finally, school districts across the state and across the country face increased transportation costs. A lot of that is due to the shortage of school bus drivers and other transportation staff, and healthcare costs are a universal challenge today. And then, as I mentioned, our tax surcharge claims are a sort of Gilderland-specific factor. From '21, '22 through last year, we spent, we issued $9.6 million in refunds. Our bond covered part of that, the rest of it came from fund balance and reserves. Now, the good news is, if you were to remember back a few charts ago, our tax surcharge reserve now is funded to be sufficient to whatever we may end up paying in current claims. Those claims are much smaller than the wave that is mentioned here. All of these points are why we need to maintain the adequate level of fund balance. The only one I haven't talked about yet is New York State school districts for more than a decade have operated under a tax cap. This will actually be the subject of my next presentation to the board. But the tax cap constrains the school district's ability to raise resources locally, and so because of that, and the moderately hard cap on revenue locally, uncertainty about state aid trends, uncertainty about federal aid trends, having fund balance and reserves are a vital fiscal tool. So as I mentioned, the executive budget proposal will be coming out very soon. We will be, keep a close watch on both any policy she issues, as well as the runs to see what our state aid projections look like. We're doing a lot of internal development work, continuing to gather community input. We will be engaging legislative advocacy. And finally, all of this will culminate on March 4th, when Dr. Wiles presents her draft budget proposal for next year. Any questions?
Staying at times, but very important. Okay, and now if we could move on to the consent items. Get a motion to accept. Nina, Second Meredith. All those in favor? Oh, wait, questions or comments? Okay, all of them in favor? Okay. Pass is eight zero. How about if we skip number three and go to four?
Didn't?
I'm joking.
You need to do it all.
All right, let's go to number three. Do we need to do personnel, or no?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to do it? Fine.
No, you need a motion and-
I know, I'm trying to stall. Okay, so next we have the personnel action items. Can I get a motion to accept? I'm going to go with Katie. And then can I get a second? I'm going to go with Kim. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, pass is eight zero.
I will point out the reluctance of the board to seem to take action on the personnel agenda, and I think the reason, among many, is that in that action, we are recognizing the retirement of longtime, wonderful employee of the Gilderland Central School District, Mr. Chris Sanida, our principal at Pine Bush. So I want to say congratulations, Chris, and clearly, no one wants to let you go. So congratulations.
I'll just add, thank you, Chris. You were a wonderful principal to my three children. It meant the world to us. Katie or Kim, would you like to say anything, or Tara?
Yes, thank you. I refrained from giving the double thumbs down that I told you I was going to do, but thank you. I had the pleasure of working with you, not as a colleague, and also as the principal for my children, so thank you for all your work here.
Yeah, I'm still in denial. It's not happening, so it's all right. But no, this is, you're an amazing principal. It's been an honor to work with you, like with PTA and things, and as Abby pointed out to me a few weeks back, that she was sad for me too, because we've known you for 10 years, so she said, you're kind of losing your friend too. So, yeah, it's, it's not happening yet.
You've changed many lives for the better, Chris. Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I, you know, I feel, I feel the need to at this point. I just want to thank everyone in this room and everyone who has sat in this room before you, all of my colleagues through the years, mentors, all the students, families, that I've had the opportunity and the privilege to work with. This is a wonderful place, this is a special district, and I am forever grateful for the opportunity to work here with each of you and for everyone who I've worked with throughout the year, throughout the year. So while I look forward to the opportunities that lie ahead, I certainly reflect with a debt of gratitude and appreciation for just the opportunity to work in this special place. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's a consent agenda. You just-
Need a motion.
I need a motion, sorry. Can we get a motion? All right, we've got Rebecca, Second Gloria. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Pass is eight zero. I got so sad, I don't even know where we are now.
Information.
To Rachel.
Good evening. I have three trade books for, to submit for your approval. The first is The Year of the Dog by Grace Lynn for use in third grade. The second is Granny Torelli Makes Soup by Shannon Creach for use in fourth and fifth grades. And finally, Ferris by Kate DiCamillo, also for use in fourth and fifth grades. I have copies, if anyone wants to review them after the meeting, and will be asking for your approval on March 25th.
Great, thank you. Superintendent Information?
All right, I have three items for your initial consideration. The first is a draft calendar for 2025, 2026. I wish our students hadn't left, because at least in the draft, we have included the holiday that was requested, that's September-
October 20th.
20th.
October.
October, yes, I'm sorry. October 20th, which is DiWali for the 2025 school year. So this calendar right now has 184 total days, and it is a very kind calendar in that Labor Day is as early as it can possibly be, and the last day of school is actually quite late. So graduation would be on the 26th of June. So that and the placement of some of the other holidays that we have become accustomed to observing has given us quite a bit of flexibility, which is why we included DiWali as a, as a potential in the calendar. In terms of process, this calendar hasn't been to the leadership team yet. We have our meeting on Thursday. We also have a team of other stakeholders from the teachers group and the business office and transportation who also take a look at it. But because we're in the process here, we wanted to give the board an opportunity to get a very first look at the calendar for next year. The only, because I, you know, I like to be cautious, the only caution I would say about the addition of holidays is, is not every year is as forgiving as next year. When Labor Day is late and some of the other holidays fall on instructional days, there will be a point where you're going to have to make choices. We are spared that looking at this draft for '24, '25, '26, but there will come a time when there will be choices. So happy to take questions.
Go ahead, Meredith.
So for the athletics schedule, will it also observe these holidays that are on this current schedule?
So that's a complex question, because we do not make the calendar for competitions. We're part of a larger group, and there is diversity among that group in terms of which holidays they observe or not. We try to do our best on what we do internally. Mr. Johnson, I know you have some experience in this area, so I'm going to let you weigh in as well.
Yeah. That's, I think what you said, Maria, is right on. Depending on when the holiday is, what the holiday is, will dictate whether or not there might be competitions on it. We do have, obviously, oversight over practices, and our athletic program and our staff and coaches try to be very sensitive to that. So can't give you a full answer, but that's what I can tell you.
Yeah, Meredith, it's always been difficult. I've always had the same sort of concern. We do what we can in the district, but we're at the mercy of like suburban council and other schools, so it's difficult.
Sometimes we have the ability to move contests if we're playing a school that doesn't celebrate that holiday, but then you're at the mercy of the rest of the schedule when you're playing. So to put a bunch- So to put a bunch of games together because you're moving, again, it depends on the sport, where you are in the season, how much time you have left before the sectionals, there's a lot that goes into those decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I'd like to ask board members a question, if that's okay. How are you feeling about the addition of Diwali? I think our students, you know, the two students that came out tonight, they're representing 200 so plus, so I'm sure they're interested in what our thoughts are, and it's fair game since we have the draft calendar here and Marie put it on. So can we start with Katie? If you want to share your general feeling.
No, I agree with exploring of adding it to the calendar.
Yep, I agree with Katie. I also support it.
I knew it was coming. I saw the article in the Altman Enterprise. I absolutely support it.
I do as well, and I applaud the students for initiating that.
I agree, I can't say it any better.
Ditto.
All right.
I support it.
Great, and as do I. Perfect, thank you. Anything else? Marie?
I have two other topics. I just want to give a brief update, remind everyone that we are hard at work at defining the scope of the capital project that will go before the voters on May 20th, 2025. Our facilities committee met last week and spent a very intense 90-plus minutes going through a pretty expansive spreadsheet that included items that came from many different areas, including recommendations from our future-ready task force, items that were generated through our building condition survey, items that are carried over from priority two and three from our most recently completed capital project, and then those things that we are newly required to do, which is to prepare for the world of EV buses. So it was an intense list of items. We cannot do all of it because the scope of the work would just be more than would be wise to ask our community to support. So the hard work between now and when this body is together again on February 11th is to really come to some consensus about what shall be included in that scope of work. Right now, internally, the facilities committee is working on a thought exchange because we want to make sure all of their voices are heard as we're deliberating and that we're getting a good sense of the various priorities that members of that committee, which represent all of our buildings and different stakeholder groups, to hear what they have to say. So stay tuned, lots of work in the next month. We have two tours planned for members of the committee. One is tomorrow at Gilderlin Elementary School at 4:00, and the idea there is for the committee members to see some of the areas that are high priority for work in that building. And then the following Wednesday, the 22nd, there'll be a tour here at Gilderlin High School to do the same. And then my last item, if there are no questions. I had hoped to, but did not manage to pull together a little presentation for you on the results from our thought exchanges around distraction-free learning. But I thought I would just hit some highlights for you because I'm sure you're curious. We did, before the holidays, we did a thought exchange with staff and families, and then just last week, we did a survey for our six through 12 students. And the results were not surprising. I'll start with staff. We had 111 staff members complete the thought exchange, and of all the groups, they are most enthusiastic about looking at creating distraction-free school zones, school environments. The number one thought was, we really should follow the pathway of our neighboring districts who have already done this because they're having a very good experience with it. The second most highly rated thought was, students' well-being needs to be our top priority. So they were overwhelmingly in favor of doing it. The details of what it looks like and how we do it is still open for conversation. Our families were more of a mixed bag. The top thought was, please be sure to have an open conversation so that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in. And then there was quite a bit about how we would do it and how it might be enforced, and isn't it possible to simply ban them and have the enforcement not involve any devices and so on? And there was also a very highly rated comment, which I'm going to mention just because the topic of bullying has been so prevalent of late, and it was just a note that banning cell phones in schools doesn't stop the bullying that happens on them outside of school. And we can only control what we can control. So those were some of the faculty and staff thoughts. Students, I'll start with Gilderlin High School students. We had a fairly low participation rate, even though we set aside a time for them to do it. We had 38% of our students responded. We asked them, we did a survey with them rather than a thought exchange, whether or not they agreed or disagreed in varying degrees with cell phones being a distraction in school. 34% said, "No, it's not a distraction." 28% were neutral on this. 38% said, "Yes, it is a distraction." We asked them if they believed there was a negative impact on academic performance. Again, at the high school, 59% of respondents said, "No, there is not an impact on academic performance." 24% said neither yes nor no. 4%, I mean, 17% said, "Yes, there is an impact." However, the research shows quite the opposite. If you look at the research, a couple studies that were cited in the NICE Group meeting that was held in September, lower quality notes, less retained information, poorer performance on tests. So that's what they had to say. We asked students about the benefits. Let me just hit some of the highlights. Let's see. They find it helpful break from academic pressures, gives them an opportunity to relax, connect with friends, stay updated on events. Others see it as a distraction that can negatively impact focus and productivity. Significant number of students reported that social media does not affect their feelings about school, either because they don't use it or can manage it responsibly, and there were concerns about cyberbullying and privacy that students raised. The other big topic that came up was, and this was from both students and parents, was cell phones being important tools to communicate in an emergency. That came up again and again and again. So there you have it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? I was a little surprised by some of it, I suppose.
Will we be able to get this at some point?
I will put it together in a nice little report. I just ran out of time.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Action items, Andrew.
Thank you. I have a number of items for your consideration tonight. The first are two service agreements, one with achievements addendum for evaluation services, and one with New Lebanon Central School District for a shared transportation agreement.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the service agreements? Katie, then Nina, sorry, Katie, and then Tara? I'm just going to go right down the line. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, eight zero.
Thank you. My next item are professional service agreements for accompanists for choral rehearsals and performances throughout the school year.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept? Kim, then Nina? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Eight zero.
Thank you. My next item is scholarship from the Westmere Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary that will be given to a senior who has demonstrated volunteerism, community service, and character with a preference towards pursuing a career as a first responder.
Great, can I get a motion to accept? Okay, Meredith, second Gloria? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Eight zero.
Thank you. My next item is the property tax exemptions for low-income senior citizens and low-income people with disabilities that we discussed at the previous meeting. At the last meeting, there was some conversation about how this would go. What I present to you first is the recommendation of the Business Practices Committee, which is a partial increase in the existing exemption, starting at $35,000. But I would encourage.
I would say, what are your thoughts, Andrew?
Whether or not to allow this, the starting figure are up to the board's discretion. My only recommendation would be that if we do one, we do both. That is, if we grant, change the exemption for low-income senior citizens, we also change the exemption for low-income people with disabilities.
Okay. Any motion? Rebecca? Second, Katie? And any questions or comments or discussion?
I have a question.
Yes?
How does it differ from what we currently have?
Let me pull up that. It raises the cap by a few thousand dollars. So the phase and amount is the same, and that's in statute. We had, our current exemption was the previous maximum allowable exemption, and I will tell you where that starts in one second. So our current exemption starts at $29,000 or less and phases up to no more than, or less than $37,400. The maximum allowable starts at $50,000 and phases up to 58,000, you know, just under $58,400. And those are for, in 5% exemption reductions, or assessment reductions.
And can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
I know last time you said that there was, it would be hard to estimate the impact on taxpayers. Is that still true?
It is going to be true until we adopt, unless we, if we adopt it. It's hard to, it's hard to project in a reliable sense.
Is there any rough estimation?
I believe what I said last time probably holds true, which was, when we took the firefighter exemption, we talked about typical house would pay dollars. This would probably be measured in tens of dollars if we did the full amount, obviously less. But even the first year, we won't be able to fully capture it because applications would be due, I think, March 1st. So the timeline for people who potentially get it, there may be fewer applicants this year than there would be next year, even with the same eligibility thresholds, if that makes sense, because of the time, the timing as such.
Could you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
So if the board chooses to adopt this tonight, it goes into effect for taxes that would be levied this year, but to receive the exemption, a resident would have to apply by March 1st. So that would create a, you know, a month and a half window to apply.
And I have one more. If we didn't pass this tonight, would the old exemption stay?
The old exemption stays until we change it.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Raise them up higher, I'm not wearing my readers. One, two, three, four. Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed? Okay, that's fine. I need a second.
Can I just add a comment? The reason I'm opposed to this, and we talked about this at the last meeting, is because the tax burden then goes to other taxpayers. This is not a tax-neutral proposition.
Yeah, in other words, there's no revenue impact in the school district. If you, and we'll talk about this in August, when we set the, when we create the tax levy, it is then distributed across the assessed property value. So our levy would not change, the amount of assessed value would change. So for every dollar that someone receives in a reduction, that dollar would be spread across the rest of the property wealth in the district.
Which would include low-income families.
Potentially include low-income families who are not senior citizens or people with disabilities.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Everybody staying with their vote? Okay, so it passes six-two. I'm opposed.
All right, let me get back to my notes. One second. So the next item, that was the low-income senior exemption. The next item is the low-income people with disability exemption.
Okay. Who was I on? Kim? Would you like to make a motion? No?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Who wants to make a motion? All right, Meredith, second. Tara? Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Passes, all those opposed? Passes six-two.
All right, thank you. My next item are two budget transfers of $48,000. They are funds for special education, BOSI services, non-instructional salaries, and transportation.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept? Kim, second Nina? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Passes eight zero.
Thank you. My next item for your approval is an application for the EPA Clean School Bus Rebate Program. We submitted this application last week because of the deadline. It was approved by the business, it was discussed and put forward by the Business Practices Committee, but not fully approved by the board yet. This is a non-binding application, and it's a lottery program, so we've applied for funding from the EPA for electric school buses. If we receive it, we're not obligated, but we need board approval to continue the process.
Okay, can I get a motion? Gloria, second Rebecca? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Eight zero.
Thank you. My final item are a number of donations. First, a monetary donation of $800 from Stephen Kennedy to purchase materials for the high school career and trades fair. Mr. Kennedy is one of our local advisory council members for the business department. Donation of a large portable Gemini Bluetooth speaker, two Shure PG848 microphones, two microphone stands and cables for Gilderlin Elementary for Mr. and Mrs. Salogzy. They have a Kindergartner GES. Finally, Gilderlin Elementary teacher Beth Tangor was recognized by J.B. Hunt as part of their Adopt a Class program. The class received t-shirts, hats, and $500 gift cards from Really Good Stuff and Lake Shore Learning.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept? Okay, Rebecca, second Gloria? Any questions or comments? Just probably thank you from everyone. It's wonderful, thank you. All those in favor? Eight zero. Okay, that was it for you, I think. All right, we're on to superintendent action.
I just have one item for board approval, two co-curricular clubs, one at the middle school and the other at the high school.
Great, can I get a motion to accept? We'll go Tara, second Nina? Any questions or comments? I thought that the Dutchman Dance Club seemed pretty cool myself. All right, everybody in favor? Passes eight zero. Okay, now we're on to board committee reports. Who wants to go first? How about Audit?
We have not met since the last meeting, and I don't think we have anything scheduled.
Well, we will be scheduling shortly.
And business practices? Haven't met either. Communications?
Communication, we met, we have been looking at the Board of Ed Award, and we're having a recommendation that we would take that award and change it to GHS Heroes for the high school, and the award would be nominated by staff from the high school to students who really are students who are making significant positive contributions to the school environment, but maybe perhaps behind the scenes aren't always our students who are recognized for some of the work that they're doing for the school community and giving the staff and teachers an opportunity to nominate students to be recognized by the board for their work. So there will be some criteria that will be coming forward, and the team will be talking about ways that can be managed for teachers for nominating students, and then the board would review, and we would award these. So we're looking forward to that opportunity for students who maybe we haven't always been able to formally recognize in the past.
How is that different than the deserving Dutchman? Or something, there's like a deserving Dutchman award? Is that only for athletes? Is that only for athletes?
Um, no.
Mike Piscatelli, do you know, is that, is the deserving Dutchman only for athletes?
No.
No. It's once a quarter. For anybody. Okay, so that, just to, you know, when you present it to us, that's going to be one of my questions. How does it differ from what we already have? And I believe your intent is to replace the current Board of Education award, which focuses on grade point average.
Correct.
Right? And so then I'd be curious as to, then are we still recognizing and how are we recognizing students who work so hard on their grades? Okay, thanks.
Can I, can I just tag onto that? Thank you. Sorry to, yeah, tag onto your piece there, Blanca, but is there any award right now for academic, like, any, there's not, right? There's no award, just for academic excellence?
There are awards that are handed out, but this is specifically the Board of Ed Award. But there are other awards that are handed out through the high school that, numerous awards that are handed out through the high school that Mr. Piscatelli could probably speak to more formally than I, but that when they have the award ceremony, there are many students that receive them based on academics. We were looking at some of the other students who maybe haven't always had the same opportunity for recognition for their contributions.
I think it's great that we're doing a Heroes Award. I think that's fantastic. I love that they're nominated. I think if we totally lose a GPA award, I think the award ceremony is a beautiful event every year, but, and I could be wrong here, I think they're singular students that are recognized, not groups of students based on academic excellence. I could be wrong.
Mr. Piscatelli.
But it's not like every student with a 3.7 or higher GPA is recognized, I think.
Right. So we miss kids.
And junior/senior awards is mostly academic-focused. There are other things involved besides that, but the majority of the awards are based on GPA and interest postgraduate stuff. We do the June Awards, which again, a lot of times is recognizing academic achievement, and that's in all four grade levels. We do, at graduation, obviously, we recognize all the different achievements for a ninety-five or higher, ninety or higher, or eighty-five or higher. You know, again, I think a lot of us are talking about different ways to recognize students. We do the deserving Dutchman, which is more about acts of kindness and things that students are doing that are noticed by staff and they're nominating students. We're also a building cabinet at the high school. We're actually, we're talking about, again, we're going to call it something like Dutchman Pride. We're just in the baby steps of talking about this, but of ways of, that teachers can recognize students for various things, including academic achievement and also helping other students. So there's a lot of different things going on, so. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you so much.
I just feel like there's still value in recognizing that cumulative average. It is really difficult to, you know, keep your grades up, and I would hate to lose that. I know we had, Mike, you know, Mr. Piscatelli just said we have the junior and senior awards. Just recently, my daughter Sophia got, I don't even remember what it's called, some kind of, I don't want to mess it up, All-American Scholar for the Capitol District, Gilderlin Pop Warner nominated her, so she made it to the Capitol District, and now she goes on a national. So I sent an email to Amy Knapp, her guidance counselor, and was like, if she gets this, am I supposed to let you know? Like, how does that work? If our students are, get awards, do we let you know and then they're recognized? And no, we're only recognizing students for certain awards that we've already, like, pre-selected. So it's just, there are other ways that we're kind of missing kids and not recognizing them or not giving them that moment. And so I think the Board of Education awards matter when they're applying to college, too. Like, you can list it on your, in your naviance or whatnot. So I would hate to lose that. It doesn't mean I don't believe that we should have other avenues and other awards. I just don't necessarily think that we should omit that one. Two cents, that you probably didn't ask for. Okay, anything else on communications?
We are going to start, at our next meeting, we're going to start talking about communicating the budget. It's time to communicate the budget and the capital projects to the community.
Okay. Thank you. DEI is tomorrow?
We meet tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. So we meet tomorrow. Policy?
We haven't met, and we do have a meeting scheduled on January twenty-eighth.
Okay, great. Any other public comments, Linda? Okay. Board issues, ideas, and sharing? No, nobody has any issues, ideas, anything they want to share? Okay. I guess I would just like to say to anyone watching, you may have noticed that the entire Board of Education is wearing a breast cancer awareness T-shirt, and we are doing that in support of a community member, and we wish that community member well. That's it. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Executive session.
Oh, adjourn into executive session. Your night isn't over. Okay, motion? Rebecca, second Meredith. All those in favor? Eight-zero. Good night.